Order, open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, starting with our council reports, I don't have a lot. We had a special EDAP meeting. Talk about those loans that are on the agenda later here, but we voted to approve both of them. We also had our business tours. We continued those. I forget where we left off, but the last one was over at Spanier Metal Works and the one before that was at Valley Industries, which were, I think, highly informative. That's all I've got for a report, though, so I'll turn it over to Neil.
They're a little different because...
Last Tuesday, we had Sterns County League meeting in Richmond. Big thing there was the J.O. and passing the sales tax, which is probably the preferred method, otherwise your property taxes will go up. And the other thing, I had Red Roof or Green Roof meeting, and their big thing is they're building an entryway out back. I think that started probably today.
Thank you. And then Kristen asked me to remind everyone, and then I promptly forgot, that we do start early voting here at City Hall tomorrow. So, early voting for the general election will be open and available here at City Hall during normal hours. Next week, Monday, we'll be open for voting until five. City Hall will be open until six, but voting until five, and then, of course, voting in the general election on Tuesday.
And Saturday, Saturday.
Saturday, we're doing voting as well, until three, starting sometime in the morning, nine-ish. Come after ten. Make sure. It might be open earlier than that, but done by three on Saturday. All right.
There you go.
Megan?
I had a surprisingly light couple of weeks, so I don't have much to report. I did attend the trunk-or-treat, which was really great, and thanks for the chamber for putting that on. But other than that, I didn't have anything official.
All right, Jean?
I also went on one of the tours to the Valley Industry one, the Sterns County Municipal League in Richmond with Neil. The special EDAP meeting, I was at that, that's on the agenda. Liquor Board was this week, or last week, and the downtown meeting, and I also was at the Lyons Chili Pete. I was busy.
We're busy.
We were slacking.
I was at the Chili Pete.
I was slacking, yes, you're right.
I was chosen not to sit with you, and we skipped out early because the kids wanted to see a movie. Paul?
Planning Board, we went through the cannabis hearing date along with the signage ordinance, and there was one other, I can't remember. Parking, that's what it was. And that's it.
All right. Department heads. Mike, you're first on my list, so I'll turn it over to you, sir.
So far today, we had 117 calls, down a little bit from years past, but that's okay. Training in September was hose testing, and in October, we did a pre-plan at the middle school. They have a project that's starting November 4th where two exits are going to be closed down. So, we went down there and made sure everybody knew where the closest exits for the students were, if we'd happen to get a call there or something, to those two doors that are shutting down. It's the two doors facing the middle school parking lot.
On the backside.
Yeah, the awnings are about ready to fall down, so they got to fix them right away. We had our supper October 12th. We served 797 people. I believe that's how many pre-sales we had too, but we had close to 200 walk-ins, so that was really good. We did big red rides October 11th for the second graders. We had trunk-or-treat downtown on Saturday for the kids. And we also did touch a truck Saturday after trunk-or-treat at Tractor Supply. We will be having, we will be getting our new training officer and lieutenant at our November meeting, so those two spots will be filled, so we can get back to normal. Any questions from anyone?
With what you just said, are you going to be hiring somebody to fill that spot, or are you just going to leave staffing as it is for right now?
We will be hiring for both spots, and then they'll both, well, the lieutenant job will be voted on in the next election, but I'll be appointing somebody to fill it until January of '26.
Let me rephrase, because you just had somebody resign. Are you going to hire another firefighter generally?
No, we're, the guy that was going to retire in December hasn't given me a definite answer, but it sounds like he's not going to, so we'll be full staff.
All right. Any other questions for Bill, or for Mike, excuse me? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
You too, thank you.
Bill?
In your council packet, you will find our liquor store update with all the sales, year-to-date, very favorable. Sales are up, profits are up. Before expenses, the margin's increasing. The T.H. sales are the biggest probably surprise, otherwise most of our categories are following standard industries right now. So, we're pretty happy with where we are. In the packet, you'll see the last two pages, I have numbers without lottery in it, so you can see the difference it's going to make in our margin. Next year, our liquor board and I decided we're going to stop taking or carrying lottery because of the time consumed for the profit that you make, and we could use the space for other things right now that are more profitable. Lottery Commission has been, is aware of the change, and we're letting our customers know as well. What's been happening is a lot of the other folks that take lottery don't cash tickets, so everybody's been coming to our place to cash, and we're almost giving more money away than we're taking. So, we are going to stop that as of February. That contract will be up. We had our first wine club a couple weeks ago, and started the year off with a bang. We had 85 customers. We're just ending up our 14th year. We have one of the longest-standing wine clubs in the state, and it was well-attended, going very well. The next month, November 14th, we're doing our second annual Battle of the Wines again, where we have two companies coming in, going head-to-head, where we will taste Cabernet from one company to another company. The customers will vote on it. Last year, we had 120 attend. We're going to be working with Maple Lake. They're going to help us. We're going to borrow their wine glasses, so it should be a really good event to attend. Watch our Facebook Live posts this week, and next week, there'll be a doozy. So, that'll be fun.
Do you have costumes picked out for these ones already, or?
Yes.
And your dogs are ready?
No dogs in this one. Just some weird-looking people. And December 5th is our holiday showcase. Again, these events are all at the American Legion. That's all I have. The numbers are there. Email me, call me if you have any questions.
Am I seeing this right, that you're basically looking at a net profit increase by getting rid of the lottery?
Yeah. Yeah.
Works for me, and then digit. Any questions for Bill? All right, Ron?
All right, thank you. First of all, the rain barrel program that we had going, all 15 barrels have been spoken for, so I don't know if we want to look at redoing that this winter possibly. Let's see, leaf pickup is Thursday, the 31st, 7:00 a.m., and we will pick up compostable bags only. So, remember, November 15th, the winter parking regulations do go into effect. If anybody noticed, we did have a number of downtown streetlights that were out. They have been replaced with LEDs. The old ones were the, they were 400-watt high-pressure sodiums, which they are no longer available, so we are making the switch over. Next week, likely, the fishing pier and the boating dock will be pulled in, so that will be completely wrapped up. Out at the airport, I think everybody's aware, we are 100% full now with our handlers, and fuel sales out there currently is 20,700 gallons to date. And the last couple of years, we've been averaging about 21,000, so I'm quite confident we will surpass that. So, thank you.
Didn't you budget for just, like, 14,000 a couple of years ago?
Years ago, yes, we were budgeting for 14,000, and that's when the training programs really took off, and, yeah, the whole airport really seemed to have taken off with that. So, it's good. And also, yes, the construction at the Ampe Park Shelter is progressing also.
Any questions for Ron? Okay, Tarek?
All right. We had two manufacturers' month tours, the one that you guys mentioned, which was the Valley Industries, but also last week, we were at Spanier Metal Works. Again, that was another one that was very well-attended. And the last one of the month is coming up tomorrow, where we will be touring safe basements. The meetings that I attended were the Public Works and the special EDAP meeting, planning meeting, and of course, as Jean mentioned, we had a special liquor meeting. The downtown committee meeting, which was very interesting, we had a speaker from an entity or a company called Rethos. It's a nonprofit that helps small communities, or communities in general around the state, revitalize and kind of come up with strategies for revitalization. And lastly, I was at the Lyons Chili last Friday, serving chili.
You were early.
Yep, you were already gone.
For once, I was early for something. Any questions for Tarek? All right, anybody here for our open forum? One, twice, all right. Moving on to the consent agenda, the minutes listed on page one for the various meetings. Along with the vouchers on page two, totaling 1,076,799.58. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, or does anybody want to pull anything?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Hersberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Soini. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. All right, before we get into business, we have a meeting at 6:30 to talk about the past dues and the certification of those, and then, were you sticking around to talk about B, or to listen in on that? Okay, then I'll just leave everything else in order. So then, old business, A, the cannabis ordinance on page three. We have a proposed cannabis ordinance. Paul talked about this. Planning's going to have a public hearing on November 18th, and wondering what the council wants to do. I think it would make sense for us to just sort of hold off until that public hearing.
I agree.
Right.
Rather than post this now. Okay. So then, we'll just let that be. It'll come back to us after Planning has their public hearing, and we can take action on it at that point. The next is the certification of past due bills. We'll come back to that after our public hearing. The city attorney, RFP, is page 23 of the agenda. Council met about this at 5:00 in a working session to discuss. We narrowed them down to our, I think, two frontrunners of Flaherty and Hood, number one on the list there, and Kennedy and Graven, number four. And if my memory serves, we settled on, I think, Kennedy and Graven as sort of the frontrunner here. If there's any discussion, we can certainly have that. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to hire Kennedy and Graven as the new city attorney.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Soini to hire Kennedy and Graven as the new city attorney, effective January 1. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. All right, the Seal Co. project payment estimate. Ron and/or Chuck, please.
Yeah, I can give a quick update. The 2024 Seal Co. project has been completed over the past several weeks. It included seal coating and fog sealing several, several streets around the city, as well as redoing the pavement markings. So, in your packet is a copy of pay request number one, and the amount of $221,918.63 to Aztec Corporation.
So, this included deduction for them getting the thing wrong over by the Catholic Church? The bike path sign was reversed, and they had to cover it up. It just brings a smile to my face when I bike over it.
We still do have retainage. This isn't the final pay request, so.
I'm not worried about it. It just, just makes me laugh a little bit. No. All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve payment estimate number one.
I'll move to approve payment estimate number one, in the amount of $221,918.63 payable to Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation, AKA Aztec Corp.
There's a motion by Brick, as stated on the action sheet. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All right.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. All right, the Lake Avenue River Bank, jumping to page three of our update here. Ron or Chuck, please?
You skipped one.
Nope. No, I did skip the airport crack sale, sorry. All right, well, gentlemen, on the airport crack sale.
Yeah, the airport crack repair project has also been underway. Obviously, includes repairing a lot of the large and smaller cracks along the runway and apron area. In your packet is a copy of pay request number one for that project, in the amount of $135,003.45 payable to Struck and Irwin paving.
All right. Questions for Chuck, although I'd entertain a motion, as stated on the action sheet?
I'll make the motion to approve payment estimate number one, in the amount of $135,003.45 payable to Struck and Irwin paving.
There's a motion by Soini, as stated on the action sheet. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brick. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. All right, now can we talk about the river bank?
Okay, thank you. I think everybody recalls the river bank project. We've been looking at this for the past several years. We did apply for two grants over that period of time, and were unsuccessful on both of them. Public Works Committee reviewed this a number of times and felt we did not want to fund this completely ourselves, and we did go to the north fork of the Crow River, and the information is enclosed that they do have a grant, a WBIF grant, which we are likely going to get a 75% cost share from them, which is tremendous. We do have two prices enclosed, and the low being from Voss Plumbing at the cost of $114,645,000. So, 75% of that would be 85,983, which the city's portion would then be about roughly $28,661. On top of this, we do have to remember that this, the road cost is not included in that, and just estimating be roughly about $25,000,030 for the road. We don't have a firm price on that at this time. I guess they did ask for a little bit of more information of how many yards of material actually have we lost there. Chuck did a rough estimate, or estimate on that, and he figured roughly about 160 yards, which, that's a lot of material already that's gone. So, I think it's a good project for both parties, for us to get it taken care of, and it's a good project for the Crow River, so Chuck, I don't know if you want to add anything?
No, the proposed improvements are basically, as shown on the plan, consist of putting a sort of a, stabilizing the slope with riprap. Originally, we had proposed, when we were pursuing the DNR grants, to use more of a bioengineering type, type fix, but that was much more costly, and when we were not able to get that, we pursued the riprap, so.
Okay, so the recommendation is to go forward with the quote from Voss, contingent on receiving the grant funds. Is there any further discussion on that?
The funds for this, for the city's portion would come out of the Street CIP.
Hearing no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the quote from Voss Plumbing, in the amount of $114,645 for the North Fork Crow River Restoration Project, contingent on receiving grant funding from the North Fork Crow River Watershed District.
All right, there's a motion by Hersberg, as stated on the action sheet of our update. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded from Thielen. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None? Motion carries. Okay. Onto the fee schedule. Tarek, anything you want to tell us about this? Anything we should know about, pay attention to?
No, I think the only thing that we had was a fee for reapplication, or reapplying for a plat. I think that was the only fee that was added.
Pulled off the food truck permits, but keeping the permitting process, correct?
Yep.
We're just not going to charge for the permits anymore. All right. Any questions about the fee schedule, or is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion to approve the fee schedule.
There's a motion by Soini to approve Resolution 24-30, amending license and fee schedule and the proposed 2025 fee schedule. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Brick. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, administrative lot split, Curra's Properties. Tarek?
Yeah, they applied for splitting the lot into three lots. It was originally three lots, and they combined it. This is the old.
Blue stem.
Blue stem.
Blue stem. And, yeah, so they're just applying for split lots of the three, because they found out that. And it is, I was going to say.
That was great. Are we going to need to rezone them at some point?
At this time, they're not asking for that. They're just asking for a split. And they're only a business currently in the first lot outside.
I think it would make sense to go either way, but for right now, all we're doing is splitting it. Well, there's a request, and I'd entertain a motion to approve the administrative grant of the lot split for Curra's Properties LLC, if somebody wants to move that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Soini, as stated on the action sheet, to grant the split. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries.
It just, on process, I just want to comment that, you know, our ordinance would really allow Tarek to just approve that, but I think staff likes the idea of those coming to the council meeting because it's easier for them to track. But I think, you know, Tarek, theoretically, Tarek could approve this, I think, could be on, on a, if there was time pressure, I think Tarek could approve one of these. There's nothing that says he can't, as long as it meets the requirements of the ordinance. It could come on the agenda and kind of get approved later by, by council if staff needs that, but I just thought I'd mention it because it's clearly the intent of the ordinance to just allow the administrator to approve it.
Okay. So, if nothing else, we can certainly do it as a consent agenda item going forward.
Right, yep.
Okay.
All right, Tarek wants to talk to us about how Ron's retiring in 20 years.
Bill's giving us five more. Yeah, this, obviously, our public works director is retiring. After how many years, Ron?
38.
So, it's going to be a huge expertise gap at the city, and we've been trying to come up with ideas on what to do with the roles going forward, how we can replace the position, how we can split it for two. And I know we spoke about other policies and procedures, the intention of splitting it into two positions, because finding somebody with the necessary licenses could be a challenge. So, we have these two options here, and actually, there's a third option, I know that we talked to Brad about, but I'm still in favor of just trying to see if we can find a replacement for Ron with all of this. Go to Plan B, we need to work with you.
Yeah, I will, and I will say, Ron and I had a good chat earlier this evening about sort of getting his thoughts on it. One of my biggest concerns was, is the licensure really integral to being able to do the job, or is it sort of something that you need to have as signing authority? And I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, but Brad or Ron, somebody correct me if I do, please. I think we could have an effective public works director, even if they weren't immediately licensed in all of the areas, given the staffing that we have now at the city. So, I would be in favor of, I guess, option A, which is to leave the position as full-time public works director overseeing everything, but I would suggest that we change the job description so that, instead of saying must maintain a class C water and wastewater license, that it says must maintain or be able to acquire within four years of hiring. And then that way, it sort of goes to your option C, Tarek, of we could have like a deputy director who could step in on the signing of things while the person undergoes trainings, if we find somebody that we really like who doesn't have the qualifications.
Yeah, that works.
That was my thought. I'm not hearing Ron telling me I'm wrong, so that's usually a good sign.
And Brad's not, I'm, I'm.
Brad's not shooting daggers into me, so that's a good sign.
He has some of the licenses.
He does. I, I think that would give us the, the widest ability to hire somebody to oversee the full department. I'm not convinced at this point that we're big enough to split it up into a water wastewater sewer and then a parks and streets department someday. We might get there, and someday it might make sense for us to hire deputy directors to oversee those things, but for right now, I think we move forward with one public works director. But we can change that job description to say get the licensure within four years of hiring, because as I understand it, it's a three, three-year process if everything goes to plan. So, if we do four, it gives a buffer year. I'm looking to see if there's any concern about a four-year time period from the people in the room. Okay?
What do you think, Ron? It's all right?
It's absolutely a minimum of three, but, you know, they don't give the exams. You know, I think it's only like three, maybe four times a year, so the timing, you're going to need at least four years, in my mind.
Okay.
If not more.
Possibly five.
Possibly five, yeah.
I don't think we have a big enough staff for two separate departments, so what you would be looking at is two bosses telling the same group of people what to do in that regard, and I think that would be rough.
It wouldn't be bosses, it would be two superintendents, really.
I just think it would, you know, and they're both new, and they're both trying to, I think that if we can avoid that, we probably should at this point.
Not big enough.
Yeah, because you would still share employees for both.
Right, and if they're both new and they're both learning on the job, there'd be a lot of overlap into what they're being asked to do, and I think that's rough.
Two people, you're going to pay double benefits, so budget-wise, we save with just going along.
If it ends up that we have to do two, then we have to do two, but.
I have one concern I'd like to bring up, possible. On these job descriptions, you've got a public works director, an airport manager, and then the next one down, you've got a park streets and airport superintendent. Does this mean that we're going to be getting two? An airport superintendent and an airport manager?
Well, not if we just get one.
I wouldn't think it would, but I mean, it looks like it. I'm reading it.
On the job description you're talking about?
Yeah.
So, what happened, on page 66 is a different job description. If we decided to go with the, the option B on page 61, under the more, so if it were to be split up, then the description on page 66 would be the description for one of those two positions, and then the description on 70 would be for the other one.
Okay.
So, really, what we're talking about is just keeping it as is, which is the description on page 62. With the modification that if we hire someone, they'd have to be licensed within five years.
Yep.
I think we'd want to carefully consider if we can wait that long, but I think we should at least have that option there.
Yeah.
Anyone feel otherwise? Jean, you've been quiet.
We hashed it over in policies and procedures, went back and forth, and.
Until you were blue in the face, I think.
How soon are we going to start advertising for this position?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Seven fifteen.
The sooner the better.
Right. Well, we have a public hearing at 6:30. At 6:29, I'd entertain a motion unless somebody wants to come back to this.
I'll make the motion to leave the position as full-time public works director, grade 10, with the new DA scale, and start hiring process as such.
Do you want to?
It's the changes to the job description to include getting licensure within five years.
I have a motion by Soini, which I heard a second from by Brick, to leave the position as a public, a full-time public works director at a revised grade 10 on the new scale and start the hiring process with an amendment to the description to allow for license and certification within five years. Yes, your motion?
Yes.
Megan, your second?
Yes.
All in favor indicate by saying aye, unless there's further discussion. All right?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries. All right. We have a six-thirty public hearing on the past due bills. You can find more information about those on page two of our update. Jeff, anything you want to tell us about the trash bills or?
I don't think we've had any opposition to certifying them for you. I'm going to assume that's why you're here. I am. That's where I got my West Central sanitation. Jeff Portram, West Central Sanitation. Yep, just first want to say thank you for our continued long partnership. It's been over thirty years, servicing the refuse and the recycling for the city of Pinzall. This is the smallest list I've seen in many, many years, so that's good news, pretty straight up stuff, residential bills that haven't been paid. So, and as we always do, if someone were to come forward after this public hearing, before they get certified, we still would accept payments without the penalties and the fees. So, but again, it's the smallest list I've seen for a long time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tarek, anything you want to tell us about any of the water or sewer or Ron, anything on the mowing? Anyone want to tell us anything else?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. I like the fact that House on Coronas is in here for the first time in about six years. All right. Then we'll close our public hearing. Back into old business, item B, the certification of past due bills. I'd entertain a motion to certify the delinquent garbage, water and sewer, mowing and snow removal to the county auditor to be put on real estate taxes.
I'll move.
Motion by Soini as stated on the action sheet. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. Motion carries. All right. Thank you. And Brad, on the Relief Association, page seventy-four of our packets. Then also for the record, Brad did pass out a handout before we started here tonight, going over the current balance in the Relief Association account so that we can see where that's at.
So, analysis from Para, P R A, came in.
I never got those.
Fiscal year to date was June thirtieth. One's in the account, seven hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine. Um, they did a analysis to go from twenty-three hundred to twenty-five hundred and it would be, it would still be a hundred and forty thousand dollars overfunded. Note on the bottom there, our account balance currently is eight hundred and five thousand, one hundred and eight dollars, so we're doing good. We're doing well.
How's it been switching to Para?
Very good, clearly.
Easier for you at least?
It is.
Yeah, I think given we're going to be a hundred and forty thousand overfunded, a hundred and twenty-four percent, it only makes sense that we, uh, we bump this up as a recognition for all the work you guys do. Any other thoughts by the council? All right, otherwise I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, there's a motion by Soini as stated on the action sheet approving resolution twenty-four dash oh-nine, opting to increase the benefit level for firefighters who are vested in the plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brick. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you, Brad. Thanks for sticking around.
Thanks, Brad.
Brad, are you guys looking at increasing the amount that the city gives towards your retirement?
So that would be an extra budget question, but I'd actually have to give work.
Yeah, it's been forever.
We talked about it last sixteen years and it's been the same.
Yeah, it, it, it's time to change that, I think.
The problem is he keeps coming in at a hundred and twenty-four percent of funding, hard to justify us spending more money.
Probably don't want to push in a pickle either.
But it is worth a discussion.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Business subsidy, Nelson Properties, page six of our update. All we're looking at doing tonight is setting a public hearing. This is a significantly sized loan over a hundred and fifty thousand, looking at about two hundred and twenty-five total. From the city side only. Yep, the township would be contributing the same amount, at least at current contemplation. So what we're looking at doing now is adopting a resolution that would set a public hearing on this to be held on November twenty-fifth at six-thirty. Motion twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-one.
I will make that motion.
Motion by Soini, I will say that that went through policy, or went through EDAP without hesitation. The financials of the company were reviewed. Everybody was satisfied that it was a, an appropriate loan. So, there was a motion by Soini. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Carries.
I did, should mention, and Tarek, I don't know if the township, did they provide you with the resolution authorizing the city to hold that hearing for them?
They are going to do it at their next meeting.
Which is tomorrow, I think.
No, not tomorrow.
Next week.
Next week?
November.
Oh, yeah, it's not going to be next week because they've got.
Yeah, they gave me, I think November twelfth, they said.
Oh, okay.
When, when you get a copy of that, if you could send it to me, we should, we should have that.
But I told them that we did, they did the same thing for us for the WDR one. I said it's going to be similar, so you guys can look back and see what happened there and do the same thing here.
Yep, perfect.
Well, would it make sense for, and I, I just don't know what the process is, but to loop in Kennedy and Graven folks for this and say this might be something you're going to need to work on?
Um, I, I mean, I don't know the timeline for funding. I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm planning to draft all the loan documents.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think we have the information, so I'm kind of planning to do it. I don't think it's going to carry over. Do you know the timeline? Do you, do you have a sense of the? Oh, sure, of course. But, but maybe, you know, shortly after the public hearing, probably in December anyway, we'll probably be doing it, so.
All right.
So I think we'll, we'll be okay on that.
Then I'm not worried about it. Okay, then on page seventy-seven of our packet, we have the council approved with EDAP the twenty thousand dollar interest-free loans for building improvements in the downtown area. We have our first applicant, which is the movie theater. They're looking at doing a new HVAC unit. Um, Gloria came to our EDAP meeting and shared with us the struggles that she has had, um, trying to find people to service it and found one person in the state who's willing to take care of this. Um, and unfortunately, the cost is significant, so. EDAP took a look at everything and given the amount of money that she's able to put in to match it is more than fifty percent, we recommended funding the full amount.
Yep, EDAP set up these loans where ten is from the city and ten is from the township.
Yeah, interest-based verification, the interest-free loans are for any business that wants to improve this to their building in the city or township.
Yeah.
Because it's both.
I didn't, I didn't realize that. So it's ten from the township and ten from the city?
Yes, yep.
So we'd be looking at a motion to approve an interest-free loan for the movie theater in the amount of twenty thousand over five years. Anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to approve interest-free loan for the theater in the amount twenty thousand for a five-year term.
Motion by Hersberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Soini approving the loan. Any other discussion?
Uh, I see in the discussion, you talked to her about a new projector or what is the anticipation with that?
There was a discussion on getting a new projector, but, uh,
Yeah, and that's about thirty thousand, she said. That's why she set up that GoFundMe page was for the projector.
I suppose HVAC is more important than the projector.
No heat.
It should be fixed though, well, like soon. Because he was going to start working on it, I think, immediately.
Yep.
But members of EDAP were going to talk to her about whether or not another EDAP loan would help with the projector. And we sort of said if she needs it, we'd certainly be willing to talk about it. But we also talked about how there might be a number of legitimate business reasons why it would make more sense if you could show old movies and keep all of the five-dollar admission fee rather than showing first-run movies where you give nine out of ten dollars to the studio just for having the ability to host it. So they're going to have that discussion with her and something may come back, but for right now, we're just looking at HVAC.
Is she happy with the numbers that are currently.
It sounded like it.
Happening?
Uh, she said the numbers are still a little low, but we're the most getting on there.
She says she's selling a lot of popcorn.
So, yeah, please go to the movies, guys.
Yeah, every time we've been there, there haven't been, there's just been a few, so.
All right.
Better than none.
I can't remember if we called the question. I will call it now.
Yeah.
We did?
Yeah, Neil made the motion.
Did we vote?
No.
That's what I mean. So I haven't called the question.
Neil first.
Yeah, so Neil made the motion, Gene second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. All right. Bill wants us to build him a new store.
So we have to have a meeting?
So we have to have a meeting. I'd look at setting a special joint budget and finance liquor bar and city council meeting for Monday, November fourth, twenty-twenty-seven at six P M.
I don't like that one.
What day?
November four, twenty-twenty-seven.
That wasn't my first choice.
That will work. I can probably schedule out that far.
That's only a week from today.
No.
He said twenty-twenty-seven.
Oh. That was only a week.
I know, I didn't change it.
What a smart alley.
Monday and Tuesday are no good.
Okay. What was our other choices?
Friday is.
A gen.
Wednesday, the sixth, or Friday, the eighth.
Friday, the eighth is the day before deer hunting and.
We'll be busy.
It will probably be pretty busy that day.
Well, we could do it in the morning before you leave.
No.
I know, I know, I got suns going.
I'm sure. How about Wednesday, the sixth?
It'll work. Yep.
We could do it after, I mean, it would have to be late for me, like seven fifty and seven thirty.
On what day?
The sixth.
Wednesday, the sixth.
Because the, the fifth at this time, we should all be in Chalmeen.
Well, we'll have picked it up anyway and taken it home.
Right.
We didn't have the fifth on here because I don't think we can do that.
Fifth is on here.
Is it as a, as a choice?
It is, but I can't do it.
It's election.
And I also think on the sixth, I mean, we might all be hungover, half of us from celebrating, the other half from being miserable, so.
I can bring treats.
There is that.
Yeah, we aren't going to all agree.
Choices again?
Wednesday, the sixth, or Friday, the eighth.
It says day only.
I'm going to say daytime because Friday evening is going to be public.
Well, they're leaving for hunting. You're just going out by the lake, yeah. Let's do it Friday morning.
Well, I'm going up to.
Nine A M.
International Falls, I think.
I know.
No, that's be the first time.
If you want, Megan, you can send us your thoughts.
Okay.
I get it.
Yeah, we'll see how I feel.
On, on Friday, I have to be done by eleven.
Oh, that won't be a problem.
That'll be fine. So can we do Friday, the eighth at nine A M?
If you don't come, you don't come.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion to set, set a special joint meeting for Friday, the eighth at nine A M?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brick. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Soini. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
We have to.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. All right. We have a number of informational things, the month end reports, meeting schedules, fire department report, liquor store report. And then with that, I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session to talk about how well Tarek's been doing.
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion by Soini to go into closed section, session pursuant to thirteen D O five, sub three A. Is there a second?
You guys want to stick around?
Second.
Seconded by Brick. All in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, we will go into closed session and then come back in a few minutes. I would ask all folks, not only the council and Tarek, to please exit at this time. Okay, so we're back live. We met in closed session to talk about the annual performance review for our city administrator. Overall, a very satisfactory review and we'll continue keeping him in our employ.
Yeah, since we gave him a three-year contract.
All right, and with nothing else, we are adjourned. Thanks, folks.